We'll let the record show that it's about five minutes after six. I'll call to order the regular scheduled meeting of the Durant City Council of September the 12th, 2017. I'd like to call upon our good friend James Dalton to lead us in our invocation and Councilman Chad Hitzcock to lead us in our pledge. If you can stand, would you please stand, please?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the day and the help you give us today, the breath of life you give us. Thank you for our families and places we live, Father. Lord, I just lift those in Texas and Florida and Georgia and places where they've experienced these horrific storms this last few weeks and days. Father, we lift them up to you as they try to recover. In your spirit, Father, we pray to give them strength and courage, give them wisdom to do what they need to do, Father. In our forgiveness and protection for them. Lord, I pray to do the counting in my eyes. Lord, let them make sound decisions, Father, for their loss. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. [laughter] To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get on with the agenda and the items of business, I'd like to make a couple of comments. One, I want to thank city manager and his staff. Marie, if you're out there. Dwayne, Byron. Tonight, we are live with the livestream. I know they've been working on it sometime and had to order stuff and get stuff hooked up, et cetera. And we're appreciative of that and hope the citizens are appreciative, too. Where do we look if we're... What are we going on at? Is it a secret? Oh, okay. There you are. Anyway, we have that in place now. And thank you, city manager and staff, for getting that in order. The other thing I want to mention, James Dalton made a reference lifting up our friends and neighbors in Texas and Florida. And I've read something just recently that really struck me that, you know, with these storms and all that's gone on and we've witnessed folks from all over the country offer and literally give assistance to the folks in Texas and Florida and wherever. What I read, though, was, you know, even with all of our differences, the one thing that ties us all together is our great country. And I'm grateful for that, James, and I think all the folks here are grateful for that. At the end of the day, this country is the tie that binds and brings folks together in times of need. The other thing I want to mention, Chief Hauser, if you'll stand, please, and Chief Joins, our fire chief Joins. And if any of your... any of our men and women in uniform, or not in uniform, but that were members of the rescue efforts, the Swiftwater Rescue, the chief, your folks, I'd like for you guys, if you wouldn't mind, take just a minute and elaborate what our own folks here in Durant, our men and women in blue and our men and women in the fire department, what we were ... and our emergency management folks, what we were able to offer up to those in need. Chief Joins, why don't you go first?
Okay. I have some slides. Oh, if you have time, we're still going to make a lot of that. We just need to take some quality down there. James is very instrumental in this, the orders coming in to go for emergency services. You know, when he passes bond, he sends a team of briefs for Swiftwater technicians down there with the boat. We sent a second team possibly midweek to work with them. I think there were 32 boats there from Oklahoma when they first arrived, and I think there were 62 from time they came home. I know one day, I think they pulled in, rescued 48 people and pets. It was a pretty busy day for them, because they'd have to transport them to another area to be to dry land. But it was a prime experience. And from the pictures you'll see later, it's an incredible disaster. They saw a lot of bad things, but they witnessed a lot of good things happen, too. There were certain things that happened in there that just everybody was willing to help, that people gave. And we had calls from different businesses wanting to give water supplies, take out foreign... James Dalton, God, he's so kind, he can give information as long as he has. So I appreciate his continued support.
Thank you, chief, and we'll look forward to your report in just a minute. And Chief Hauser, you may...
..................................................................................................................
Thank you, chief. And as a matter of fact, I think as recent as just yesterday afternoon, the Choctaw Nation's plane took a team of emergency management folks. James helped me out in some emergency supplies to somewhere in Florida. Key West, I think one of the hardest-hit places. But just another example of our officers and our men and women that served this city and representing the city very, very honorably over the past few weeks, and we appreciate Any comments from council members? Not... We'll... If you're following along on the agenda, we'll actually begin with the roll call now. Clerk will call the roll, please. And don't forget to press the speaker button.
Here.
Here. For the record, we have a quorum. Our first order of business this evening is a presentation. Chief, I think you're up on that. And the chief has a citizen commendation award that he'd like to present.
Yeah, before we get to this, I'd like to take a moment. I'd think I'd be amiss to say another one of our members is in Corpus Christi right now with the chainsaw crew clinging up Richard Ezel. Went on a mission trip down there. So let's keep him in our prayers as well. If I could get Sergeant Brian Moore to come up, I know he's in the audience. I have a letter of commendation for Sergeant Moore. It reads, "I'd like to thank you for your proposed traffic flow plan for the area involving Durant Intermediate School. Sergeant Moore monitored that situation during his patrol duties approximately three years ago, came up with a solution that the city was now able to implement this year. His insight and his proposal was very valuable in selecting economical means of controlling traffic in this highly congested area." So three years in the making, you guys approved it, and I'd like to give him a letter of commendation. [applause] And I'm going to ask him to give the citizen's commendation with me. Of course, this project hadn't been without criticism from motorists and the residents around the area, but I want to read the citizen commendation as well. It says, "Recently, the city of Durant implemented a traffic flow plan to alleviate the congestion-related issues at the Durant Intermediate School. Although the plan was presented and discussed in open council meeting and publicized in local media, the actual implementation drew some criticism. This person called me with similar concerns, but unlike all others, this person offered citizen involvement instead of condemnation. They had a plan of action, a solution, and a servant's heart for the community. They suggested that additional signage would help inform parents of alternate routes in the school area to better facilitate drop-off and pickup of the children. And unselfishly, this person offered to have those signs made up and paid for themselves. As a parent and part of a parent organization, this person volunteered to draft maps of the proposed DIS routes, use social media to get the word out to other parents, and they indeed used social media to move toward a positive solution and have no doubt assisted in the successful implementation of an improved and safer traffic plan where before none existed." I want to commend Carrie Walker for her involvement in the community and selflessness in which she serves. She'll get a citizen commendation and a certificate as well. Carrie?
Thank you very much. Welcome.
And again, I would like to thank James Young and his crew for doing such a tremendous job. And I think Mr. Meredith may have some comments on that project as well.
Thank you very much. You bet. You bet.
Well, thank you for allowing me a few... just a few seconds. I know you've got a busy schedule tonight. But chief and I have been talking through this whole process, and we were open to any suggestions because we know that the traffic does get stopped up there. I will tell you this, from a school administrator's standpoint, I know of no school anywhere that does not have a five-to-10-minute congestion during pickup time and, to a degree, at the drop-off time, but particularly at the pickup time. But I think what the city has done, what Chief Hauser and his staff has implemented and what this council has approved, has helped the traffic flow for those that are not picking up our kids, okay? We're still going to have that five-to-10-minute congestion there. And that not goes... only goes for DIS, but for all campuses. It's just... it's just a necessary evil, so to speak. But I'm not sure that any city can get... there not be some congestion problems around schools. Even if you put four lanes with a turn lane in the middle and multiple entrances and exits, I don't know that you're ever going to get rid of the congestion for five to 10 minutes on pickup time. But I do think this has helped, and I think it will continue to critique and make it even better. So from a school standpoint, we say thank you, and I hope that our citizens continue to be patient with us as we work out the best we can do for all involved. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meredith. And really, just another good example of partnership between the city and our public school system and how, when we come together, we can find solutions and, along with citizens and, you know, our own employees. So thank you again for that opportunity. I'll be the first to admit that this is a real challenge for me to keep my paperwork here in order, things in order, running this little computer thing here and trying to hold this button down on this speaker. And I'm good for one or two things, but not three or four at the same time. So bear with me if we have some small delays. But the next item on our agenda in order of business is the presentation of a proclamation designating October the 4th, 2017, as the 10th Annual Durant Walk and Roll to School Day in the city of Durant. And as is customary, as the mayor, I want to read this proclamation. So as long as I can hold this button down here, I want to read it. A proclamation on Walk and Roll to School. Whereas the city of Durant supports programs dedicated to improve the quality of life for our young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility in our great community. And whereas the city of Durant is designated October the 4th, 2017, as the 10th Annual Durant Walk and Roll to School Day in conjunction with the official International Walk to School Day, promoting students community-wide to get out and walk or bike to school. And whereas the Durant Police Department and city staff will coordinate efforts with the Durant Independent School District to provide guidance and patrol for travel routes and activities on October the 4th. And whereas our students need guidance, inspiration, and encouragement, which we can give in order to help develop and continue healthy lifestyles, with a sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for their current and future responsibilities to serve the community of Durant and America. And whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we shall continue our partnership with the Durant School District to proclaim our support of the hopes and aspirations of our students. Now therefore, I, Jerry L. Tomlinson, Mayor of Durant, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim, October the 4th, 2017, as the 10th Annual Durant Walk and Roll to School Day, and urge all departments of government, schools, civic, fraternal, and patriotic groups, and our citizens generally, to participate wholeheartedly in its observance. Mr. Meredith, would you like to come back and make some comments and reference? A lot of you have had kids over the years participate in this. Dwayne?
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank... make a special note to thank Mrs. Rebecca Parr. And this all stemmed from a grant that she wrote for the city, which was Safe Routes to School. And we thank you for that. There's lots of new sidewalks and things that our kids have been using for a number of years now. But this is an annual event. I have... I hate to admit this, but I have only gotten to participate in it twice. I've always had meetings in Oklahoma City on the day it happened. But everyone has jumped in and done a great job. Again, I think it's a great partnership between the city and the schools, and we appreciate you very much. And, you know, they say, I'm going to regress a little bit from Walk and Roll to School Day, because I forgot to tell you one thing when we were talking about DIS and the new setup and pickup, drop-off, and one-way streets. As many years as I have been going up and down those streets around Waco and Grand and all that right there, the first day of school, without thinking, "Chief, I'm confessing to you," I turned the wrong way on Grand. But I quickly got off on Dixon and made it right, so... But again, we appreciate the city and what they do and the partnership we have. I don't know that you'll find many cities that have this, and just want to say so much that we are so appreciative of what everyone here does. So thank you.
[applause] Our next agenda items to consider is number two, the consent items. We have items 1A through U. To help streamline meetings and allow the focus to be on other items requiring more strategic thought, the consent items portion of the agenda, groups' routine, procedural, and self-explanatory items together. These items are voted in a single vote. However, any council member requesting further information on a specific item can remove it from the consent item section for consideration on a separate vote under Agenda Item Number Two. Council members, are there any items to be removed? Any items to be removed? I will ask for item F, H, N, R, T, and U. Are there any others? Consider a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote, please.
[inaudible].
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move to item number two.
Consider approval of special event permit application for the downtown game night for Southeastern Homecoming, sponsored by Durant Main Street. And I believe Ms. Stephanie Gardner is here to talk about that just a little bit for us and for the press.
Thanks. You know, I love to talk about our events. So after meeting with Southeastern, the Chamber of Commerce, and others that were working on the joint homecoming parades this year, so we're having Durant High School Parade as well as the Southeastern Parade the same night downtown. And we really wanted to do something that would draw the students to downtown and stay longer than just for the parade. So this year, Southeastern's theme is "Let the Games Begin." And so we started brainstorming, you know, what could we do downtown to enhance the parade experience for the kids and to do something fun and family-oriented? So we came up with a downtown game night. So we are requesting that we can use Market Square to set up different game stations. So we'll have everything from dominoes, cards, you know, all types of board games just set up with seating. So families, students, anyone can come and play those before the parade begins as well as on throughout the night. And we are also working on a life-size Monopoly board where we can actually have human, you know, pawns or whatever that can come and play the Monopoly game. So we even have students from the high school that have offered to help us make the game board that are really interested in art and design. So that's exciting for them to have that opportunity to get involved. We're going to invite a couple of food trucks. And then Southeastern has agreed to sponsor a live band that will actually perform after the parade if this is approved. So Waseta Switch, which is a local Red Dirt band, has been reserved to do the concert after the homecoming parade if all goes as planned. So we're excited to have lots of students downtown and really help them see downtown as, you know, a place that they can come and hang out with their families, but also just as young adults.
Any questions for Ms. Steph? It's council's pleasure.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote, please. Aye. Motion carries. Did I say H? I don't know if anyone is here on item number H, Cub Scouts. But just wanted to point out, Dan, the special event permit for the Cub Scout is the Pinebox Derby, as I understand it, their annual deal. And we're pleased to... I'm pleased to that the council will approve this event permit. It's council's pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, clerk will record the vote, please. Aye. Motion carries. Item number N, consider acceptance of the $1,000 donation from XTO Energy. Oh, there he goes.
Kind of worked my way out there. Yes, XTO Energy has... they've been good to make a donation to us. I think they donate to several of the departments in the county. Most of the places that have their either processing area or they have distribution lines coming through, well, they generally donate $1,000 just to help support the department and with any needs it may have. This doesn't... this isn't payment in case they have something... some disaster happen, but it's just something they kind of want to do to pass along goodwill and do a little something for the city, so...
Thank you, chief. Goodwill is always good.
That's right. Thank you.
Council's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye. Item number R, consider acceptance of a $500 donation from The Woodman Life for the purpose of assisting with Hurricane Harvey relief effort cost. James?
Mayor and council, The Woodman Life is really active locally, and when they saw the need that we were sending people and resources into Texas, they came forth and donated $500 to kind of defray some of the costs that FEMA's not going to reimburse. And they wrote us a check for that, much appreciated. And along the route, for instance, when our FOP guys were delivering water, we had three blowouts. So it will go to help defray some of that, and then whatever else we have, we're going to buy some powdered Gatorade and things that you can put in a bottle of water, and that way we can, if we need it, we'll have that on hand. So that's what we plan to do with it. We really appreciate them. They're a good partner and help a lot with things around the community. So we just want to thank them.
Thank you, James, and thank The Woodman. It's council's pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote, please. Aye. Item T, consideration to accept donated cash match funds from the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma. A local community partner to be utilized specifically towards the match requirement for the 2016 higher-town grant 16-4292-7067 from the National Endowment for the Arts to create and design an arts district within the Ninth Avenue corridor, C-2016-55. Ms. Becca Collins.
Did you have a specific question, mayor, about the project? Okay. The city did receive a grant to create and design an arts district in the Ninth Street corridor, just like you said. And the grant's $50,000, and our required match is $25,000 cash. And Choctaw Nation was willing to give us that donation to help with the cost, and we are requesting that the council accept those funds. we are requesting that the council accept those funds.
Another example of partnerships between the tribe and the city and our efforts.
Absolutely.
It's council's pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Item U is to consider to accept donated cash match funds from the Commercial Metals Company, CMC Steel Oklahoma LLC, a local community partner, to be used, to be utilized specifically towards the match requirement for the 2016 Our Town Grant 16-4292-7067 from the National Endowment for the Arts to create and design an arts district within the Ninth Avenue Corridor, C-2016-55. Again, Becca.
Okay, another one of our great partners who was willing to assist with our match. And this is from the CMC plant here in Durant.
It's council's pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Okay, I think I'm up next, so. Oh, okay. All right, that's good.
If there are no objections from council members, we're going to go to Item Number Six on the agenda. At the request of the city manager, we have, I think, someone that's traveled from out of town that the city manager wants to introduce. But Item Number Six is our information items regarding all of our departments and reports that they submit on a monthly basis. We've been having different ones on a monthly basis give reports, but we've kind of gone to a discretionary agenda on that at the request of any council member. But the department heads are prepared to present a report upon a council member's request. Really, at this time, I think I'll just turn it over to city manager for the first topic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm going to bring forward gentleman, Mr. Frank Crawford, to come up to the front to present a, some information regards to an audit with our utility billing. I've been keeping the council informed of the past couple of months. We've engaged with Mr. Crawford and his firm in regards to a, we had a departure back in, I believe, early June that raised quite a few questions. And we, I believe, within 24 hours contacted Mr. Crawford to engage his, his firm in taking a look at the issues within the utility billing department. And he's here tonight to brief you on, on his findings.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Frank Crawford with Crawford and Associates. We're a CPA firm that the city has utilized for a number of years to assist in the accounting and financial reporting area. And on occasion, we get asked to do certain type of forensic examinations, such as the one that we're going to talk about tonight. This one actually is relatively good news. A little bit of background, back in early June, I believe it was, we were contacted by the city upon the city discovering through some turnover and through some unusual activity that they were stumbling across in the utility area about the need for maybe a special investigation or a forensic look at the entire utility billing and collection area. Obviously, that's a pretty significant chunk of time and resources. However, we have at our disposal a forensic software that we use that literally allows us to recapture 100% of the data and then examine it in any way that we wish, including recalculation. So literally, what we ended up doing was downloading from the time period of about September 1st of 2016 through June 1st of 2017, about 35,000 bills, individual utility bills, and literally had our system recalculate every one based on authorized rates and rate tables by user and based on the meter readings that were input by the system in order to try to discover whether there was any type of utility billing scheme related to the calculation of the bills, the collection of the monies, or perhaps the misappropriation of the monies and an adjustment of the account so that it would look like it didn't owe any money. The good news was that based on that recalculation of the 35,000-something bills over that timeframe, 95% of those bills, which is about 33,000 plus, ended up recalculating based on a zero variance. So in other words, there was no issue with the system, there was no issue with the billings being manipulated. And then the other 5%, literally were related to rounding issues in most cases. Most of the differences were less than 20 cents on every utility bill, and that was about 1,900 bills that had a little bit of an error. The total amount of the error in that 1,900 bills was only $400, over literally millions of dollars of revenue that was generated in that time. We basically put ourselves in the, in the framework of, of the mentality of what would we do if we were trying to manipulate the system in order to gain some advantage or to steal or embezzle or misappropriate monies from the city and ran our software to basically disprove every theory that we could come up with based on the facts and circumstances that were there. So after disproving all of the various schemes, we were left with basically what we believe to be the final conclusion is that the city basically just got behind and they got sloppy. There were posting errors, there were backups, there were things that had not been posted that were a month old that should have been posted already. We noticed a spike in adjustments right around May of 17, where literally based on being behind, instead of people getting billed a second month for utilities even though they paid, the city didn't process their checks or deposit them, but yet they would still go in and adjust some of these people's accounts until they could get caught up. But our concern was more about what are happening to those checks that were undeposited and uncashed and whether or not they were being used as a disadvantage to the city. And none of our, none of our forensic type work yielded anything of any substance, just some errors, some policies and procedures that weren't really very designed very well. And even the ones that were designed well weren't being performed in a consistent enough manner to keep that from occurring. So we've issued about a six-page report that details all the rugged detail of what we did, along with some recommendations that we've made for shoring up some accounting policies and procedures related to utility billing and collection and adjustments that we think if the city will make those recommendations, that will prevent this thing from happening again. Now, one thing that we were a little bit limited on that I can't really provide you any kind of assurance with relates to whether or not the utility billing readings were the correct readings. In other words, forensically, I don't really have a way to know whether or not the actual reading is being read on site unless I'm literally following the meter reader and then attempting to reread it at the exact same time that they are, they have just read it. So we had to basically take the presumption that whatever readings were recorded by the meter readers, that that is what goes into the system, and that's where our system took over to recalculate. So that doesn't address whether meters are being read, but yet that forensically doesn't really allow itself to be tested without being there at that time. So I can't really address whether or not the usages that are being recorded by the city are correct. All I can tell is there doesn't appear to be any material trends suggesting that they are not. In other words, there could be occasions where some meters are estimated and not read and may be shorted for a few months, but then read ultimately five or six months later, and we realize that there's a pretty significant difference between what was estimated versus what's billed. So that results in four or five months of small bills and then a month where it's very, a very large bill to catch it up. That happens in most utility systems that we deal with around the state. Basically, you hopefully try to keep that at, at a minimum by insisting that meters are read rather than estimated, you know, 100% if possible. So there's nothing in our report that would, that would give any assurance or verification to whether the, the meters are being read correctly. So it's basically, our concern was from the reading forward, is the system being schemed in any way that would literally rob the city of any of its monies? And again, our report didn't yield any of that. So the page you may have in front of you is simply a one-page summary. The city also has copies of the six-page detailed report. I simply wanted to do the presentation for you this evening and then answer any questions that you might have about that process or, or anything else that's related to it.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Tim, do you want to go or you want to question yet?
You guys can, you can.
Council members have any questions? Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Sorry. Are you saying it's more of a meter reader problem than an in-house problem? Did I misunderstand or is that what you said?
If, if you're seeing or you're receiving some complaints about bills spiking on occasion from customers, there's nothing that I'm seeing that indicates it's a system problem. In other words, it's not a computer problem, it's not a generation of bill problem, which then basically leaves us back to the, the issue that, the only issue that could be left, which would be that meters perhaps sometimes instead of being read by the meter reader might instead be being estimated, which is a relatively common practice, especially if, you know, in bad weather in certain situations, sometimes meters don't get read, and maybe there's a, a dog that's threatening the meter reader and sometimes they'll estimate it. But it's not a system issue that we're seeing. If you're having complaints from people about low bill, low bill, low bill, low bill, and a very high bill, even though they appear to use the same amount every month, typically it's because of an estimate that may be being done by the meter reader. And then ultimately, when they do read it several months down the road, a catch-up bill is then done to kind of catch the usage up. So if you're receiving complaints of that sort, it's probably based on that aspect of it, it's not a system issue.
And Mr. Crawford, your, your last paragraph references a number of recommendations you provided. Is that in the report?
It is. The detailed recommendations are in the six-page report. And basically, they're not complicated. There, there are a few things of additional internal controls that we would like to see done, and then maybe some changes in some policies and procedures related to how adjustments to people's accounts get credited for misreads or rereads or leaks or things of that nature. So just a, a revision of some policy and some enforcement of that policy is what we're looking for. But the system itself appears to be calculating everything correct. The only thing I can't test is the, that initial reading.
This, I might direct this towards Tim. Do we have a combination of like physically reading the meter and scanning in place? Or is it all physical?
Right now, it's manually read. We have a few of the AMR systems, but they're very few and far between. At some point over the next year or so, I will be coming forth to the council with a proposal to looking at going to an automated meter reading system to where the meters themselves are like most electric meters these days where it's just all done wirelessly. And you can have one guy drive the city and get every meter read in one single day as opposed to having to go by and manually pull each lid off, pump the water out when we get a lot of rain. And again, I'm not making any excuses. We have definitely fallen short providing good quality services and, and we're, we're working on that. The, was an unexpected turnover in that department. We have been actively recruiting all over the state, trying to find our next utility billing supervisor. We think we've got it narrowed down. And along with some of the issues that Mr. Crawford has brought forward and some of the issues that have arisen over the past couple of weeks, we will be bringing forth some policy recommendations at the next council meeting that hopefully will minimize the, these types of incidents.
That's a very common solution also. I have seen a number of communities that have moved from the manual meter reading to electronic type meters to where they are either read, you know, via, via handheld device or they're read within a, like a wireless or Bluetooth capacity. So it's not uncommon for governments to begin looking at those systems. They are relatively expensive. I mean, they, they do have some cost, but typically, the, those that produce those meters will promote to you that the, ultimately, in the long run, they, they pay for themselves. You know, I haven't really done any analysis of that, but I certainly do see those systems at play.
Just one other thing I'd like to point out. The minimum water rate is 2,000 gallons for $12.45. And when they read a meter and they put that they only used 100 gallons, then they're, I don't want to say that citizens are getting cheated out of the other 1,900, but do you understand what I'm saying? They should be getting the 2,000 gallons for 12.45, and if they put that they only used 100, they're not getting the full 2,000 gallons for the $12.45.
You know, typically, what, what I see in municipal systems around the state and around the country actually is something very similar to this in that there is a, there is a minimum number of gallons in a thousand capacity, sometimes 1,000, sometimes 2,000, to where regardless of what you use below that 2,000 minimum, you will pay that, that minimum price. And so no, no system that I know of gives credit from a reading capacity of, of using 2,000 gallons when they didn't actually use 2,000 gallons. In other words, you might use 100, you might use 500, you might use 700. The problem that comes about is that if somebody's estimating 100 gallons of usage, but they actually use 700 gallons, and you do that for three or four months in a row, ultimately, they're going to see a bill spike go above the minimum in the fifth or sixth month. The reason that most governments typically have a minimum usage gallon is that they try to establish some kind of baseline where they can pay for their fixed costs. In other words, it costs us X amount to be able to provide water to everybody. And so they usually set that minimum where regardless of the amount of water that you're going to use, everybody's going to pay a minimum bill to kind of help offset the fixed cost that the government has related to their infrastructure and their operations. So again, you know, those are, those are things that the city should be looking at internally as to whether that minimum is too low, too high, or whether it needs modification. But again, once that policy gets set, that would then give me something to test for. But typically, 2,000 gallons is, is, is very common.
I guess what I'm saying is, is if the meter reader doesn't read the meter and he estimates, he should put 2,000 gallons down.
Well, if, if that.
So they can get their full $12.45 worth.
Yeah, and again, I'll, I'll leave that up to the city policy to, to, to consider. But I, I, I see your point and, but that is the case regardless of how much water's used between 0 and, and 2,000, you will be charged that minimum, although you probably won't be given credit for the 2,000 gallons of usage. Other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Crawford?
In the meantime, is, if someone has a concern about their bill, they feel like there's a mistake, who would they need to contact about that?
They'd call, contact the utility billing office, and they can take, they'll go out and do another reading on theirs to make sure. And as Mr. Crawford stated, sometimes the estimations are not done properly, and you may be estimated for three or four months, and then at the, on the fifth month, get the actual, and it's going to spike. And it's unfortunate, and like I said, and we're working diligently to correct that.
I might just enter this into the record that, I don't know who, if you guys, am I the only one that got this? You all got it? Okay. For the record, we have some residents that live on Universe, University Boulevard that have some concerns and have made a request to the city council regarding the utility department. And if those folks are here, they, they know who they are. I, I would just advise that the city has taken some steps, obviously, with Mr. Crawford's forensic audit, that he has provided recommendations for improvement, policy and procedure-wise, to the city manager, is my understanding, and that the to the city manager, is my understanding, and that the city manager is owned up to our shortcomings regarding meter reading and is working diligently to improve that. And the question by council member Hawthorne has been answered on who the folks can give a call to here and that again, city manager was.
Yeah, they can contact the utility billing office and inquire with them. And if they're not satisfied, they can contact my office.
As an addendum, I was going to add that. If, if indeed you're not pleased with your, where you are, you still are not happy, then Tim has an open door and an open phone policy and you can certainly contact the city manager and we'll try to get that resolved. That's, you know, that's why we're here, try to resolve and issues and get them fixed and so we can move forward. Any other comments or questions from council?
I'd just like to ask Tim, did you say that you would be sending the council a copy of the full report?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
You bet. Thank you.
Chief Johns, while we have a full audience, would you like to make your presentation on our hurricane efforts?
I summarized it pretty good a while ago, but Byron is going to pull up some pictures just to kind of give people an idea of what they encountered while they were down there. This would be the group here that, they were lined up for assignment one morning. Everyone had checked in and they had to go through several checkpoints to, to get, get their names in, get the groups in. So, this is one morning they were getting their assignments. Well, evidently they were fixing to check in here because the gear is still in the boat. That would be ours in the, in the bottom right of the screen there. And this is just one of the city streets here as an airboat goes up, goes up the side there. It kind of gives you an idea of the water level and if you look in the water, you see the, there's a little bit of oil and just every kind of debris in there that you can, could imagine. So, if you've got different responders there that are going around, they're checking cars, they're checking buildings. I think that's a Bank of America there. This is the wildlife department. They took several boats, airboats down and, and helped in the rescue. I'd heard that there are like a, a million and a half vehicles down there that have been damaged by floods. So, you can imagine they're, they're setting everywhere. They, every once in a while, they said you, you could feel one underneath you, your boat would run up over one, you'd know it was a, was a vehicle. But it was a very nice neighborhood that they were in. I, I think this particular neighborhood was one that they had let water out of the levees to keep them from busting. So, these were actually, most of these were actually dry at the time of the flood, but they became filled with water as they were trying to protect the levees. This was called, the truck was actually what they called lily pads. They would bring those to high ground. They, the boats would deliver the, the rescuees to the, to the trailer and then they would take them to a shelter. If you look to the right, that's actually a seadoo pulling an air mattress and I'm not sure what else is on the back. So, they said you could see about anything you can imagine going down the, the city streets. That was a security vehicle sitting, I guess in a driveway or in the road. The light bar's still good, they salvaged it. They did send in quite a few military helicopters. They, they performed a lot of rescues in the areas that were flooded at first and I guess all through the, the whole mission, but they, they got a lot of people off rooftops. This was all the Oklahoma groups that went and I guess they took a group photo. And then on the last day, last day or the next to last day, our, our team leader from, James Hicks, from captain from the fire department, two little boys walked up from, from Houston area and, and they were handing out these notes here to, to all the Oklahoma rescuers, thanking them for their efforts and, and what they were doing. So, they said it was pretty touching after, you know, everything they'd seen and here they are giving back to the guys that are helping. So, that's kind of a, a, a brief. I've, I've got a whole lot of pictures, but I wanted you to kind of see what they were up against. They even said, you know, they got to smelling gas one morning when they were out there, they're working. Well, most of the houses down there had gas lamp stands out in their yard. Some were burning, some weren't, so you had this layer of gas flooding across there too. So, there was some guys that got cuts and, and pet scratches and, and wound up with some pretty bad infections out of the deal, not from our group, but there were some in Oklahoma and I think some in our area. But a lot of different things to contend with, but I, I hope we've learned something out of this that will help us kind of prepare and, and, you know, if, if we ever need help, I, I know, I know there'll be people out there that show up to, to help us through our problems.
Chief, and thank you and, and those men and women that were involved in that. I, I might, and you might elaborate just a little bit, or city manager, but about two-plus years ago, it was brought before council and council approved the Swift Water Rescue Grant and effort.
Yes, sir.
And, and you guys just kind of took it from there. Tim, did you want to add something to that?
The only thing I wanted to add to this is to tell Roger and all the public safety folks, my uncle's the city manager of Sugar Land, Texas, which is a suburb of Houston. And when I found out, I texted him, when I found out our guys were heading down there and I just said, Uncle Alan, we got help on the way. I hope you don't mind, it's Okies. And then I had my cousin, it was very upsetting. He's only been married for a month. He's like 35 years old, just got married a month ago and he had to be one of the ones rescued from the rooftop. He and his wife lost their entire house in a matter of hours. They had to literally climb on top of their house with their dog. Google is the dog's name and they had to be rescued from the top. So, I just want to say thank you and it was very encouraging to hear from him saying how much he appreciated, you know, his neighboring state, even though I'm a diehard Sooner and he's a diehard Longhorn fan, but at least we were, we were cooperating because I don't think, when we have times like this, it doesn't matter. It really doesn't matter.
That's right. And I would again like to thank James Dalton and David Hauser and the FOP. Those guys pitched in and like I said, drove transport vans. FOP took things down, you know, and, and James Dalton, he had his hands full. He was, he was taking phone calls night and day from the state. So, we, we've got a good team here and I appreciate their support and, and the council's support and we just need to continue.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Chief Hauser and FOP, do you guys, Chief Hauser still here? Did you have anything to add or the FOP have a, anything they want to present? I think they had some blowouts on the way down too. But we appreciate every, everyone that has participated in that effort. Council have any other reports that they'd like or have any further need for information from the department heads? Tim, did you want to give any of these or?
Tim, I, I think you and I talked about the roll-off.
Oh, yeah.
Can we talk about that?
Sure. I'd love to give a, an update on that. We did enact the ordinance a couple of months ago in regards to the $25 fee for roll-offs inside the city limits. As a result of that, we've had multiple meetings, myself, J.J. Wilson, Zeph. We have met with probably two of the, the primary customers here in getting the, the biggest challenge for us is to figure out a way when they rolled the roll-offs across the scale as to which ones were from inside the city limits, which one were outside the city limits. We came up with a solution of marking the ones with a city seal with a permit on the side. And in fact, we had one of our vendors, or not vendors, but he's one of the ones that utilizes the landfill quite a bit, has said he is, and if you look around, you've started seeing some of his, he's completely painted red. So, when they roll across the scale, they automatically get charged the $25 fee. We were just looking for a way to simplify, streamline it. So, I mean, it's a $25 fee for them to utilize that per roll-off and what we were trying not to do is make sure it didn't cost the city $50 in labor and time for a $25 permit. But we feel very strongly, I know J.J.'s been working with the sign company on getting the stenciling for the roll-off companies to come in and get and put on the side of their roll-offs.
So, when can we expect it to be implemented?
We're talking about the construction roll-offs, the big dumpsters.
Any other questions from department reports, information items? Council have any other questions? Hearing nine, we'll try to pick back up with the regular agenda order. And that would be item number?
Four.
Is that correct? Under administration, 4A. I think Ms. Becca's coming up. That's to consider approval of a request for authorization to purchase RFAP number 2018-035 in the amount of $75,000 for architectural services relating to the 2018, 2016 Our Town grant, number 16-4292-7067 from the National Endowment for the Arts, NEA, to create and design an arts district within the Ninth Avenue corridor, C-2016-55. And you've probably heard me say this before, those in the audience, the only reason we read these is for the record, so that there's no question as to the reference, the item we're taking action on and the numbers tell, tell people certain things. So, that's the reason, reason, one of the reasons we read these things, okay? Becca, you're up.
Okay. This request for authorization to purchase the RFAP is related to the match contribution that you accepted earlier this evening under the consent. And so, all match funds are in place and this is a requirement so that we can move forward.
Council, people have any questions for Ms. Becca?
So, Becca, how much will it cost? How much will we have to pay?
Well, the grant is $50,000 and then the match is $25,000 and of that $25,000, our two community partners contributed $13,500. And so, the city is going to have to complete the rest of that match, which originally when we started this project, that was not our intent and we had presented it that it would not involve city cash and unfortunately, the, all the match that we had expected was not available and Tim may want to expand on that.
Yeah, we, we are under a, a, a time crunch and this is before this grant expires. So, we're recommending tonight that we accept the, the cash donations from the Choctaws, the CMC and the city's portion of it as well.
Are we going to be voting on, the city paying the difference is, or we just accepting?
That's what's on the, that's what we're voting on, what you would be voting on right now.
Okay.
Total amount, which all those, the grant and the contributions from the Choctaw Nation, CMC and the city equal to $75,000, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, and this is an invaluable project that will help us connect our historic district to Choctaw Nation and create a wonderful place to have an arts district be viable and successful area for our community.
It's council's pleasure.
I'd, I'd like to just ask Becca one question. I think it's a wonderful idea, Becca, to do this. My only question is, this seems like it's phase one. How, I mean?
Well, it is to create, to identify that area as an arts district and then create and design the plan. This $75,000 is to contract with an architect, which is the next item on the agenda. And for the next 10 months, the architect and the community and city staff will be working along with Oklahoma Shakespearean Festival staff to create this plan. And yes, it is, you know, it is a plan, but we don't want it to sit on a shelf. We want to take that and, and move forward with it and, and improve this to be a, a tourist destination as well as a place for our community to enjoy.
I agree and I think it's great. I just wonder what it'll cost us the, on down the road.
Well, that'll be phased in also. Hopefully, we'll get some grant money.
Well, and hopefully some of the patrons will chip in and help.
Possibly.
Any more questions for Ms. Becca? Not entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Item 4B, consider approval of staff recommendation for the architectural services, C-2017-39, related to the 2016 Our Town grant, number 16-4292-7067, C-2016-55, from the National Endowment for the Arts, NEA, to create and design an arts district within the Ninth Avenue corridor. The recommendation from staff is?
Okay, and I would like to say, Janet Reed is here, the chairman of the Oklahoma Shakespearean Festival organization. They are our cultural partner in this project and with them, along with them, we conducted an extensive request for proposal and, back in April. And it is our, throughout that process, there was only one architect that actually submitted and that's the Blue Star Studio, Integrative Studio, that has been working along with Imagine Durant. He's very familiar with our community and it is our recommendation that you approve for this, approve this, excuse me, approve this letter of agreement for his services.
Any questions, further questions for Ms. Becca?
And I did think I said in my memo that I would have a new revised schedule for you tonight. I do have it. I don't know if you want to see it, but we're having to, to crunch it down into 10 months instead of the two years originally. So, I do have that.
Move to approve?
I'll make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. For item 4B, any further discussion? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Item 4C, consideration to approve the request for authorization to purchase RFAP 2018-053 in the amount of $22,568 for cost relating to the 2016 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant, AFG, EMW, dash 2016, dash FO, dash 04774, C-2017, dash 37, to purchase turnout gear dryers for each of the three stations for the fire department. Ms. Becca and Chief Johns.
Okay, and this request for authorization to purchase is related to this grant and I'll let Chief Johns speak on that.
I'm sure everyone knows what a turnout gear dryer is, right? In our, in our cleaning program on our. In our, in our cleaning program on our gear, we have a special washing machine, it's called an extractor, and we have to separate our gear, pull the inner liner out, and there's been a lot of studies on cancer. Most firefighters seem like the death is either a heart attack or cancer. We've really taken, tried to take steps to prevent cancer, tried to encourage the guys to wash their gear regular. But at the present time, we, once we wash it, we have to hang it out either on a fence or on a post or on a chair and turn a fan on it. Well, we've got this chance to get these gear dryers, and what it is, is you actually hang your coat up on your, in your pants and your boots, and it blows up through it, and just speeds up the time that it dries. It's not, that way you don't expose them to the UV rays, which breaks them down. And all this will expand the life of the turnout gear, provide safer, cleaner equipment for the guys. And we would put one downtown, one at each station, that way they could wash them and then take them back out to their station, dry them when they're off duty. So, we're going to use Bryan County Fire Tax money as the matching funds for the other 2,000 or so money. But any questions on that? Yes, and the first part of that, like she said, the extractor did come from AFG grant funds also, back some time ago.
Counsel's pleasure.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, chief. Motion carries.
Roger, do you want to speak on the state contract?
Item 4D, consideration to award OK State Contract Number SW17241 to Casco Industries, Inc., related to the 2016 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant, AFG EMW-2016-FO-04774, C-2017-37, in the amount of $21,147.22 to purchase three Raymar, Raymare turnout gear dryers. It's counsel's pleasure.
Moved to approve.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Takes us to item 4E, consideration to award or reject sealed bid, RFB-2017-022A, for GeoGrid materials related to 16753 CDBG, 16 Small Cities Street Improvements Project, C-2016-81. Ms. Becca?
The next three items are related to the street improvements. And there are actually four street segments, two on the east side and two in the south area. And with this particular bid, the dollar amount was under our threshold requirement for our RFAP process, whereas it requires the city council action. And so it is my recommendation that no action needs to be taken for this item, because the bid was $8,900 and some change. So if you want to approve, you can, Mayor, but it's not necessary. Just for the GeoGrid, the first, the one that you just read. Correct. Yeah, there's no action that needs to be taken.
For the record, item E requires no consideration or action by counsel. So we've got to go to item 4F?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Consideration to award or reject sealed bid, RFB, number 2017-022B, for base rock materials related to 16753 CDBG, 16 Small Cities Street Improvement Project, C-2016-81.
Okay, and we had two bidders that submit, two vendors that submitted bids, and our low bidder was Owner Operators, and that is the recommendation that we have for the council. Owners Operators? Owner Operators, excuse me.
We're on F, right? Base rock?
Yes, sir.
Counsel's pleasure.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. We are on item G, 4G. Consideration to award or reject sealed bid, RFB, number 2017-022C, for concrete materials related to 16753 CDBG, 16 Small Cities Street Improvement Project, C-2016-81.
Okay, there, we have a small change on this one. There were two vendors that submitted bids. Ruston Concrete actually submitted the bid, but because of their recent merge, and I talked to Ruston today, this is actually, should have been written RK Hall Doing Business as Ruston Concrete, and that's in our ENCODE system, that's how they're listed as a vendor. So it is my recommendation, and I'm looking to you, Tom, that we can award it based upon that name, for the record's sake, not Ruston Concrete, but it would be RK Hall DBA Ruston.
That's just fine.
Say the initials again.
RK Hall.
It's counsel's pleasure.
Moved to approve.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I think just for the record, the motion would have been with the RK Hall.
Yes. Yes. It's RK, Cindy, it's RK Hall Construction LLC. That's how it is in our ENCODE system, okay.
Think the intent is there, so.
What she said.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Item 4H, consider approval of ordinance 1835 enacting and adopting supplement S-9 to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Durant. Who's up on that? Cindy?
Okay, this is, this happens annually in your Code of Ordinances. Some of you have chosen to take them home with you, others keep them here. But we have updates each year, and this just says that the supplement has been updated. So if you do have your books at home, if you want to bring them in, and I'll be happy to do that for you. This is a housekeeping item.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy, counsel's pleasure.
Motion to approve ordinance 1835, section one and two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ordinance 1835, section one and two, any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve section three.
Second.
Motion and a second for section three. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Consider approval of mayor's recommendations for appointment to the Durant Community Facilities Authority. We had four seats expiring. The sitting members, the San Tuttle, Vice Mayor Hitchcock, Chris Pierce, President Sean Burridge, have agreed to continue serving on the DCFA Authority. That still leaves, will leave, I believe, one vacancy, which is referenced by the sports department, the council representatives, the public school has representatives, Southeastern has representatives, and the sports leagues have representatives. We have one vacancy there, and we have, I think, some applications to review, but my recommendation is for the reappointment of Position Two, Ann Tuttle, Position Three, Vice Mayor Hitchcock, Position Five, Mr. Chris Pierce, Position Nine, President Sean Burridge.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, council members. 4J, consider approval of city equipment policy revision. Ms. Donella?
Good evening. First and foremost, for clarification, this revision to policy will not affect the police department's current policy of allowing officers to take their police units home. So I want to offer that. And Tim, you can jump in any time, but it was recently brought to our attention in administration that we had some employees who were not on call, and in some instances, who lived in excess of 30 miles away, who were taking city vehicles home each and every day. And we are proposing some changes to the policy that will ensure consistency and decrease wear and tear on the vehicles. This revision also allows employees to drive vehicles home at the discretion of the city manager, we left that portion in there, so that department heads can communicate with Tim any time that they need to, when there are emergencies, inclement weather, seasonal issues, so that on a case-by-case basis, they can allow individuals to take city vehicles home for a specified amount of time.
I have a copy of the paper, I guess, that you're proposing. It don't make any sense if you read it. Maybe I should have Tom read it.
He's looked at it.
I think for the record, the, what I'm looking at is actually the existing policy with, as I read or look at it, the lined out...
The strike.
Words will be removed, and what's underlined is being added.
Correct.
Over that language, okay.
Donella, I think there's some confusion over the third line where it says vehicles may not, and then there's some stricken language there, and it doesn't, doesn't flow very well.
So city vehicles may not should have also been stricken. Right, okay, I see that.
So you're striking city vehicles may not?
Right. That should have also been a strike through.
Then it would pick up, the next sentence would be when an employee...
Yes, when an employee is required by the nature of his or her job, yes.
One other question I have, it says that they're guaranteed a minimum of two hours comp time for reporting back to work when on call.
Right.
What if an employee comes in on call, and he goes home, and is called back out the same night, does he get another minimum two hours comp time?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
See, that doesn't spell, that's not spelled out in here either.
Well, it states the employee is guaranteed a minimum of two hours comp time for reporting back to work while on call. So there's no provision that says that can only happen once every 24 hours. If they get called in at 8:00 AM on Saturday morning and work two hours, which would probably be eligible for overtime, so they're going to actually get three hours of pay for that plus the two hours of comp time, so they're getting five hours of pay. So if they come back, have to come back again at 10 o'clock that night, they'll receive another two hours of comp time. So, I mean, it says when they are called back.
Well, it does mean each time they're called out, whether, once they get home, it does mean once they're called out.
Correct.
Correct.
And is there any way that on some of these handbook revisions, that they can be posted on our website, so that employees can know that they've been updated or whatever, this policy changed?
We are in the middle of revising the entire handbook, and at some point, I would love to have the entire handbook available for our employees and the public to review. So at a quick glance, that would be a, be a great idea.
But as addendums are approved, we will ensure that all department heads are provided a copy, and that they are charged with sharing that with their employees.
If this is voted on, it probably needs to be voted on as amended by striking the word "not" on the third line.
Correct.
Motion to approve as amended, striking on the second line into the third line, city vehicle may not.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Item 4K, consider approval of recommendation for award of bid for asphalt. Mr. James Young.
We went out for bids for asphalt for six months, so we didn't have to keep going back every month. And we do have a state contract price, but sometimes those are hard, they're a little slow getting out to us. So I went out for bids on asphalt, we sent out to three vendors, we received two back, and I'm recommending that we take Oberlin Corporation. They were cheaper on everything except for, I believe, it's Type C. They were a nickel higher on that, but after I did a cost estimate of time with our employees driving over to the other plant, which is in Pottsboro, and driving back, and wear and tear on our vehicle, it costs us like 25 cents more per ton, or per load, we get five tons at a time. So when we burn 18.26 gallons of fuel, that kind of, I mean, we're spending more money going over there and getting it, so, yeah. And 48 minutes longer trip, so I recommend that we approve Oberlin Corporation. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote. Hearing none, clerk will record the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Good job, James.
Thanks, sir.
Item 4L, consider award of bid for the city, award of bid for city for the garage addition. Marty Cook. Jerry's ready for this one.
He can come up here, that's okay.
You got him up here last time.
Yeah. As you're aware, we're going to do a city garage addition. This is to give Jerry and his guys more room in the garage. We're going to demo the old, the two old offices out. We're going to do eighteen by twenty-six addition. On the outside, it'll be the southeast corner of the garage, which will have two new offices, it'll have a break room, it will have a new restroom, and also, we'll have a shower in there. Of course, you know, when you're working with grease, you get pretty dirty, so if they got to take a shower, they can have one, and we're going to put an eye wash station in for the chemicals that they use. I want to, we had one bid come back on this, which is Marlowe Construction. I'd kind of went in and figured myself about what I thought it would cost to do this, which I figured between sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars, and the bid come back at sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. So, my recommendation is Marlowe Construction. I don't think they are, price-wise, is right on the money, I think, what it's going to cost to do this. They're also going to put up upper storage in the new part, where Jerry can store parts, filters, that kind of stuff in there. So, my recommendation is Marlowe Construction.
Questions for Marty? Counsel's pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have two motions and, I think, three seconds, so I think we're good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Marty, good job. 4M, consider adoption by resolution, number twenty-seventeen dash nineteen, the twenty-seventeen dash twenty-eighteen Bryan County Emergency Operations Plan, EOP. Mr. James Dalton.
Thank you, mayor, council. What we have for us tonight, we're asking that you approve the emergency operation plan each year. This plan is updated, it's required by the State of Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management for us to have locally as a county. I presented this to our commissioners at the last commissioners' meeting, they did approve it, and since Durant is part of the county, we're just requesting that you adopt this by resolution, since the emergency response would be the same city or county for us on this particular item.
Questions for Mr. Dalton? Not entertain a motion. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Takes us down to 4N. Consider adoption by resolution, number twenty-seventeen dash twenty of the Bryan County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Dalton.
Okay, thank you again. Again, each county in the state of Oklahoma is required to have a hazard mitigation plan. Hazard mitigation plan, just the synopsis of this is that we identify the hazards that could befall us in the county. We look then at ways of mitigating these hazards. What it also does, that in the case that we have an incident, like they've had in Houston or the floods of twenty fifteen, it avails us to get FEMA funding for disaster reimbursement. And so, we have that side of this, and then the other side of it is, if we identify a hazard in our hazard mitigation plan, and then we look to find a mitigation effort, for instance, if we're subject to power failures, and we want to buy generators for our strategic facilities, it allows us with approval from FEMA to get a seventy-five, twenty-five grant, where the FEMA pays seventy-five, we pay twenty-five. And our twenty-five can also include in-kind labor. So it has a real benefit for us. We actually, just to give you a little history back when I was on planning and zoning back in the early two thousands, was when we first had a hazard mitigation plan. We had one named for the city and the county. Since then, OEM has recommended that because of our population, the county's population, it be one plan, and then that the city would adopt that plan as its own as well. In the two thousand, two thousand two, three, when I was on planning and zoning, we actually contracted the plan through a private contractor, it cost the city a lot of money. The thing that we saw was that the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time, and the emergency management, did the bulk of the work, and the vendor that got the contract got the money. So, when we had an opportunity in two thousand and ten, when the plan come up for renewal, which it comes up every five years, this plan that we're approving today will not be up for approval again until two thousand and twenty-two. But we took it on in two thousand and ten to write the city's plan, and then again, when it came due this time, we wrote the city, the county, the schools, by the way, are in that as well, and the smaller communities around in this one plan. I want to thank my deputy director, Kenneth Thapler, he just did yeoman's work on this. We were so busy with other things, and he took the ball and ran with that, did a fantastic job. We got this, once we got it submitted, we got it approved in just a couple of months, which is phenomenal. So, I'd like to get this plan adopted by the city, as well as, again, it was approved by the county earlier, so.
Thank you, James. Let's counsel's pleasure.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate that.
Thank you for what you do, James. And Kenneth, Kenneth still out there?
Yes.
Thank you, Kenneth.
He did a great job on that. He's excellent. I work with a really great guy right there, so I appreciate him a lot, so, thank you all.
Item 4O, consider approval of contract for network fleet by Verizon to provide global positioning systems for public works and city administration vehicles at state contract pricing, C dash twenty-seventeen dash fifty-nine. Mr. JJ Wilson.
Yes, sir. This is a almost direct duplicate copy of what the police department did last month. We use our same contracting, same vehicle for the purchasing and the system. Our goal is to hit a majority of the public works vehicles, not all of them, it's forty out of fifty-six vehicles, both for the operational tracking and also for the health management. Already, Mr. James Burke, the fleet manager, has noticed with the police department, all those little electronic codes that come up for errors, they pop up onto his phone right away, right when it happens, before the vehicle even comes up for maintenance. So, we see an extreme benefit for us hitting the rest of our fleet with the system.
Questions for JJ?
JJ, why do we need it? Is it for tracking, or?
It's for a combination of things, ma'am. One thing for, I'd say, operational is for tracking. So, when I'm doing route optimization, whether it be my sanitation trucks, my meter readers, it allows us to, one, figure out where the vehicles are for optimization, another one would be for tracking for safety. Sometimes our vehicles are out by themselves, for example, our community development, we're doing nine-one addressing, is traveling all over the county. As an example of knowing where the vehicle is when they're by themselves is a benefit. The health management, again, as we talked about, it will allow us to assess the vehicle, not just for mileage, speed, what's called geofencing, so if I'm knowing where the vehicle's supposed to be operating, I can actually assess where it's going and seeing how it's doing in that area. So it gives us a lot of tools that we've never had before.
JJ, we already have cameras in our trash trucks, don't we?
Yes, ma'am, we have cameras in three of our eight trucks. Those do also have GPS, but that GPS is specific to tagging the video imagery to the location.
So, we would be putting these in with the-
Yes, ma'am.
-cameras, that have a camera and a GPS tracking system?
Yes, ma'am. Those systems for the trucks themselves are not part of our networked, so I can only receive that information when I download it. It has a DVR and camera systems where I can grab all the data and look at it as a post-analysis, whereas this is a real-time analysis of operations.
Not entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
On 4P, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. Consider rejecting Durant Industrial Authority quitclaim deed submitted to the city of, for the property that is currently occupied by the Southwest Pickling Company. JJ?
Yes, sir. This is a quitclaim deed that was given to the city by Durant Industrial Authority for the transfer of the land. It's about five point six acres, you can see the description in the memo, for the use of the city. Working with Mr. Marty Cook and with the rest of the team, one of the things we were trying to do is trying to really assess how our property is, both in the value of the structures, but also the land itself. And working with the DIA, we realized that for part of the city and the airport at large, bringing that back into the city's fold, as it were, is beneficial. Like any property, though, we do assessments of the properties to try to figure out where they are before we start working on them. Mr. Marty Pope is working very hard to get all our buildings up to code and all the repairs and things we need. So in particular to this property, since it's not been part of the city's structure for quite some time, I ask that you reject this quitclaim deed until at such time the DI can give us an accounting of where the property lies environmentally and some of the other issues, so that when we receive it into the city, I can give you a proper assessment of how to maintain it into the future.
Questions for JJ on that? Not entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to follow recommendation to reject the quitclaim deed. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Item 4Q is to consider approval of a lease agreement between the city of Durant and KVFI Enterprises LLC, C dash twenty-seventeen dash fifty-six. JJ?
Yes, sir. This time I'd like to bring up Dr. Christopher Moore, who's been working with the city on this. Ma'am, if you could come on up here. And I'm going to walk through just particulars, that way, if we have any questions, we can go through it in expedient manner. This is a lease agreement that was brought forward to the city last month. The council, you had some great questions, working with the city manager and with the city attorney, we worked through a lot of the discussions on it. The biggest thing that we've come to a conclusion on this one is how we actually do our leasing with different property. As I talked about with the pickle plant, it's our responsibility to maintain the property and to keep it viable and to make sure it's sustainable. So, for example, in this regard to this, one of the Market Square, in addition to the business plan, one of the things that the Moores have been working very hard with is trying to help the city satisfy that requirement, to maintain our buildings in such fashion that they last. So one of the things, if you notice from Market Square, again, like a lot of other properties, they've been vacant for a long time. So, one of the things we really had to struggle with is how to bring this forward in a manner that satisfies development of the city and also helps us maintain what we have. And to be very blunt, like I said before last month, I don't have the funds to go ahead and fix every building the way it needs to be fixed. A lot of the repairs that we're doing right now, again, with a lot of help with Mr. Marty Pope, is just sustainment. I'm putting on a new roof, or I'll put on a coat of paint, but that's not really where we want to be. So anytime we have an opportunity to pursue a company or individuals that want to help us do it something that's multifaceted, i.e., help us keep the building in good shape and to bring in marketability to the square, I think that's a value. And another piece to this is one of the things, again, with Mr. Markham's help, is doing a comprehensive review of the contracts that we've had to date. Every contract we've had to date, this is actually consistent, meaning that we don't put out multiple bids for properties, and we have it in the past. And so, as we've gone forward with different entities, again, if you look at a lot of properties, they've been vacant or they just haven't been used. So, again, their proposal with the work they've done, we believe is consistent. So, city managers asked us to bring forward the contract, again, with those facts brought to light, to say that we believe this is of good value to the city.
JJ, is this the same contract that we-
Yes, ma'am.
-had problems with last month? It hasn't?
Yes, ma'am. So this is one of the things we talked about, and again, I'm glad you brought that up. It is the same contract, but again, one of the thought processes forward on this one, it's what was the issues to the council? And I think the issues were valid and the things we discussed, but again, kind of consistent with the methodology, what we need as a city to maintain the buildings, this is sufficient, we believe this is sufficient.
Has city attorney reviewed this contract?
I have.
It's in order?
It is. It's in the exact same form that it was last month.
Counsel, have any questions, further questions for Mr. and Ms. Moore, or JJ? It's counsel's pleasure, please.
Motion to approve the lease agreement between the city of Durant and KVFI Enterprises.
We have a motion on the floor. We'll have discussion. I'll second the motion. We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? And I think Mrs. Moore wanted to comment.
Just briefly, I think although the contract is the same, as it was found to be very sound and in alignment with past practice, we did also offer up a budget that further explains and clarifies what the estimated repair cost to the building would be. So I think that was the main concern that we had heard from the last meeting, and that budget has been verified and sound and completely clarifies all the expenses for the repairs.
And so to add, so I'm glad you brought that up. So one of the things is, working again with Mr. Marty Pope, when I tell you, and I've come forward to different buildings, my budget is limited. So every time I can get a, and again, this is from the public works director, anytime I can get a fund amount off that's beneficial to my structural maintenance, it's a benefit. So that dollar amount, in essence, I get to subtract from my budget. I think she stated that we have other contracts like this. Which other ones do we have?
Well, let me, and I'm not trying to answer your question, but just some information from years past, at one time, and for several years, the city owned the federal building on the corner over here, and we had several tenants in there. In and out. And I do not recall going to, you know, a request or a, even advertising, if you will, or any approvals. Administration just, you know, tried to keep the offices full with tenants, and, you know, if a reasonable tenant came forward and needed office space- if a reasonable tenant came forward and needed office space, the city accommodated, of course, with the rent amount. But I don't know if that's answering any of your questions.
No, my problem is not with the way they're going to take the building, it's still with how the rent's going to be paid. With it being by repairs, it lends itself to gray area. I just, that's my only holdup.
And I was going to say, and those will be tracked and monitored.
Well, I believe that everybody here is of the utmost integrity and will do it right. Once you set a precedent, it could happen again. We may not all be here when that happens again. It just doesn't seem like the best practice, but.
And Vice Mayor, I'm not sure we're setting a precedent because the folks.
Okay, so setting a precedent since I've sat in the seat.
In the federal building, probably remodeled or painted or whatever, those offices at different times, I think, too, but point well taken.
Could I say this? My only complaint is this is a little bit different because this is a historic building. This is a building that people got up a petition to keep from being bulldozed down about 15, 20 years ago, and that makes it a little bit different. It's a historic landmark here in Durant. That's my only complaint. I have nothing. I like you two people very much.
Ma'am, actually, and that's a great point. I'll give you a perfect example. I want to compare two buildings right now. The old city police station. Right now, the old city police station is full of storage, and there's been no repairs done to it. This building, like that one, is in the historic district, so we have an obligation to keep it historically preserved. So to that end, anything they do to the building, I must ensure that they follow those codes, and they cannot violate the historic nature. So I think in that regard, I understand your concern, but I have no intent of letting them alter the building in such a way that would negate our responsibility for a historic building. So to that end, Councilman Hitchcock, one of the things you asked about was other contracts. We have several different contracts we're talking about, several different people we leased from. So how we sit, when I say this is consistent, it's a lease between, for the property. Now, the payment is an in-kind payment, as an example. I'll give you another example, though, where we have other situations, the pickle plant that we just mentioned. That building is actually owned by that company, that entity. Again, still, the way the amounts, the way the payments have come about has been a cooperation between the DIA, in this case, and that entity. So it's consistent if we find a methodology that helps us support our infrastructure to accept payment that matches.
I totally understand. I'm just saying, since I've sat here, we haven't done anything like that.
I understand.
Mr. Mayor, if I might address Councilman Hitchcock's concern. After the last council meeting, this was brought back up to review the contract, to see if it was consistent with other contracts that the city had done. And it's not, in that the city is not typically a landlord, the city's not in the business of maintaining properties for lease, but occasionally we have one that is for lease. But I think, as it's written here, although somewhat unconventional as to our other properties, I looked at it and sort of viewed it more like a commercial property where, especially a new commercial property that is not necessarily inhabitable by a business as it stands, the business goes in, they do some build-out with some risk. And if the business doesn't, if the business, for some reason, doesn't make it after six months, they've lost their build-out cost because the city is the owner of the build-out. And we are left then with a structure that we can re-rent or is in better shape than they moved in. So I viewed it more like a commercial property than one of the other city properties, and that's why I didn't recommend considerable changes here, because I think once they build it up to the standard that JJ will require before they occupy, it will be a city asset that's more valuable then than it is today.
So I may have read this wrong or not seen it. So what happens, it says for the initial term of five years, they're going to, $200 a month worth of improvements. What happens after the initial term of five years? It may be in here, and I just didn't see it. I don't have a clue.
Well, essentially, it's a five-year lease that is renewable every year at the pleasure of the council, so there's really nothing beyond the five years at this point.
Okay, so in five years, let's say you guys have finished repairing everything. It looks great at this point. So year six, they're going to be doing $200 worth of repair every month.
No, we will renegotiate the lease, just for a five-year term.
Yeah, because at that point, it would not be advantageous to the city for me to maintain it otherwise.
And keep in mind, Councilman, the bulk of all of the expenses that they're going to put into this is not a monthly, month-to-month expense. They're going to have several thousands or tens of thousands before they get into it.
I know what it's like to fix up houses. I know what it's like. I know what you guys are going to go through. I just don't, I don't rent any houses and say, you guys just fix it up and let me know how much it is, and that's your rent. I just, I don't agree with that. It's just a, fundamentally, just don't agree with it. It's too much gray area. And again, I think you guys are great. I've only met you once. It has nothing to do with you personally, this is just my belief as a business. My biggest thing is what happens when, again, don't take this personally, okay? What happens when a future renter turns in a $100 an hour labor for two hours and says that's their $200?
Like any, so I'll probably address that into any, so for example, if we go out right now and we look at any property, I would not accept that. So for example, being if I'm looking at the property and we assess it, and when I say "we," I mean my experts back in Public Works and in community development who do this for a living, their assessment is consistent with what they brought forward. So the bid proposal that they gave us is not an arbitrary number. It's based on the fact that what we believe is required and consistent with what they said. So in essence, what I'm saying is, we believe that's a good faith estimate, and it's an estimate that is required, and that's what it would cost to make this happen.
Likely more.
I agree. I think it will be more. I just.
JJ, is this still going to be red scuffing? Is it going to look like red scuffing?
Sir, so, yeah, so I mean, so what's the
Are they going to change the whole appearance of it?
No. There, they, as I said, there are certain things, like, for example, the roof structure, the actual dimensions of the building, they are not allowed to change.
My barber's told me all of that reds. We're not going to have stakes as good.
Yeah, I'm on five walking. What about, is there any other thing in the works or within the works besides this for them?
No, no, sir.
Not for like the past 15 years.
It's just set.
Yes, sir. And I will say that, again, independent of this conversation, this is not the only entity, this is not the only time the city manager and myself have approached for other properties. Sometimes it works out, sometimes it's not. I mean, it's very rare that we get to have a, what we think is a very unique and advantageous contract to bring forward, but we won't bring it forward to the council unless we believe it's of merit.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye. No.
No.
We have, we have a failed motion. Sorry, folks. Just for the record, I did record that right. Thank you, JJ, for your time and effort. It's probably going to be a little out of order for me, but our next agenda item is public hearings, and I know there's been discussion on, and we have citizen comments, and I know the hour's getting late, but we'll move to item number five under public hearings. Consideration of ordinance number 1833, requesting a zoning from agricultural A1 to the two-family residential R2 for property located at 1110 North 49th Street. Marty?
Mayor, City Council, it's good to see you tonight. Back in June, Mr. Everett filed this application requesting approval of a rezoning of a piece of property that's currently zoned agricultural, and he wants to zone it to two-family residential or medium-density residential on 1110 North 49th Street. This zoning request meets all the requirements of the City of Durant zoning code. The community development office has received a couple of letters that you'll find in your packet concerning this rezoning, and the planning commission heard this case last week on a special meeting and voted approval by a 3-2 vote. I will apologize to you for the non-color pictures that I recognized. We had a new copier this week and realized it scanned them in in black and white. So we knew, same thing that you have, if you have, so if you can see a zone, you have a picture of it. And that way, I have a copy here, too, in case anybody else wants to look at those. I would be happy to answer any questions that you would have of me to begin with.
There was something recently that was being considered in that area, and this is the same waterway, and I believe that that was a natural waterway, that there were some other requirements to be able to do some work there. Is that correct?
This is a different piece of property. There is still a waterway across it, and it is part of the same waterway downstream. If they go into that waterway, they will have to also get with the Corps of Engineers to develop that through the Corps of Engineers profile. At this point, the request to rezone is more for a lot split so he can start his development process. That area that has the waterway will be protected at all times from the Corps of Engineers, and we will help protect that as well. But yes, that is something he'll have to address as he goes on with development.
Marty, has he done, he has not, there has not been a drainage study done in that, for that area?
We haven't had a drainage study done at all for, you talking about for his part, for the engineering?
For that, since we've had such a problem with.
We don't do the engineering until the point when the plat is submitted, and that will come back to you as well, and then you'll see the location of the lots and the drainage pond or flumes or whatever the engineer designs as a part of that system. So again, this is a rezoning. The drainage will come at a later time when the plat is available.
My concern is, is there's obviously a lot of flooding, and we're not fixing it anywhere else in this area, so we don't know what other problems it may or may not cause worse down the road. Correct?
And I might lean to city manager as well. We've actually had a meeting with a company out of, where are they from? Tulsa? Tulsa, about proposed engineer studies for the area even, and he can shed a little more light on that.
Yeah, this last week, we did meet with a firm, along with our city engineer, and discuss some potential as far as doing a long-term drainage and hydrology study for the entire city, and of course, focus on the areas that are needing immediate needs right now. Will that be done before any of this? I would say probably not. I mean, we're going to have to come back with proposals from different firms to be able to perform these studies, and they're pretty extensive. They charge by the stream mile, I believe it is.
Something like that, yeah.
And we have over 30 stream miles here in town, so, but it is something I think that we have to do as a city for future planning.
And again, this is not, and I'm not going to make a lie to, that is a great idea, the function of this firm that we're working with, but that's a long-term solution. That's not something that's going to happen real quickly. I still believe that, and I repeat this to you guys a lot, I know, but the engineering per-site development is really created in a way that should benefit the overall picture. Now, again, I can't always guarantee that, but the way the engineers design is, post-development must be less than pre-development on runoff, and I know we've talked about that before. Now, this is whether he has a pond or underground stream engineering or any other kind of flume or waterway area, he'll have to address that from the upfront on his side of it for his property.
Maybe I'm missing something. Sounds like we're getting the horse before the cart. I guess what I was trying to say, Marty, if I was going to buy a piece of property to build something, I would want to make sure it was going to pass the drainage part or be approved for drainage before I bought the property.
The ordinances we currently have in place, it will pass the drainage part. He will have to put in however big a pond is required to do that. He may lose half of his property, for all I know. Now, again, I'm not an engineer, but the engineering will have to prove itself. I can't go out and do the engineering work for him. So again, he's asking for rezoning, and the way our law states right now, our code of ordinances, we don't require them to do a basin study or a drainage survey for the basin as a developer. Their requirement is on their own property, and that engineering is done before they move dirt at all, but not necessarily before they rezone. Does that make sense?
Sort of, but I still have nightmares about heritage, and I think destiny does, too. So I don't think.
And that's a point where the engineering wasn't followed, and that was, again, before my time and your time, right? So if the engineering is followed, it should function properly.
We are under the public hearing portion of our agenda, considering this ordinance. Any other questions from council members? We'll open it up for the public portion. Anyone in the public, either in favor of or in opposition to this rezoning request? Identify yourself, please, by name and your address, and proceed.
My name is James Corley. My wife and I live at 1332 North 49th Avenue here in Durant. We're here, along with our neighbors, to speak in opposition of this proposed zoning change for our area for the multifamily housing. This property is approximately two houses south of us, and believe me, we have a major flooding problem in that area. I've got some photos for y'all to look at, but flooding in our area is the major concern to us. We've already had several homes flooded. My next-door neighbor's had his house flooded. Lady across the street has had her house flooded. When the rains, heavy rains come, our sewer lines back up. We've had sewer into the houses. We can't flush our toilets when we get heavy rains. We need a serious study done, I think, you know, for our area. I think the photos will show you how serious the flooding is. This flooding in those pictures was, we moved here in 2014, then this was a year later, so that's 2015 in those pictures. And if we allow a multifamily housing unit in our area, that's just going to create so much more runoff and more flooding. There's a beautiful pond located next to the proposed property that we're talking about, and it is full of perch, bass, and catfish, and we get a lot of joy taking our neighborhood kids fishing in that pond. And it would be devastating to us, you know, if the runoff from, I believe, what is being considered an aerobic system to be put in, that would cause the fish killed, fish to be killed. So we're, and we're actually honored today, Mayor and Council, to have three of the pro anglers of that pond here with us today. We have Ms. Nora, we have Mr. Maddox, and we have Mr. Lincoln, who's been sitting patiently back there in the back, and I can't tell you what a joy it is to teach these neighborhood kids how to fish.
I did hear an A and I to one of them.
Current crime will continue to increase, and our home values will go down. I'm sure all of you are aware of the flood problem at University and 49th Avenue. This flooding has wiped out road, our roads, and then one of the pictures will show you that road that was totally wiped out this past year. So basically, you know, we're So, basically, you know, we're, we're asking you guys to please be responsible and keep our area zoned for agricultural and, and single-family dwellers. We don't want this in our neighborhood, and I don't think you'd want it in yours. Please consider maybe getting a serious study done before you allow this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. And I, and I, I think we're all finding out this evening, information from the city manager regarding the potential future serious study, if you will, regarding, you know, that area and the drainage issues that occur. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Pate. I'm at 1316 North 49th. Jim's my neighbor. You'll have to excuse me. I've taken a little more than the recommended dose of Benadryl today, so I'm going to stick to my notes. I wanted to first respond to Mr. Cook's statement about the engineer. I worked in land development and land acquisition for a number of years in Phoenix, Fort Worth, and Oklahoma City. And so, those, those engineering surveys that they do are specific to that property. Now, yes, it, in theory, it's not going to place any more burden on the drainage system in those vicinities. However, every engineer that you ever work with will say that their design is, in fact, theoretical and not practical. I'm glad to hear that it's on everybody's radar. That was a part of my next point about the Planning and Zoning Commission from last week, is that Mr. Cook, as well as the, as well as the Planning and Zoning Committee, did acknowledge that the city has a severe drainage problem at the intersection of 49th and University. He acknowledged the need for civil engineering study to be conducted in the area. I personally, personally believe it's irresponsible to continue to approve major developments like this when we don't know what effects it's having on that area, the sum total of that area, and not just this isolated five-acre property. I live to the northeast. I've got a public waterway that passes through on my property, kind of runs on approximately 12 acres. It runs along the north side of the property and then bends up my west side and back, back to the east. On more than five occasions, since I've lived there three and a half years ago in major flood rains, I've seen a city sewer manhole overflowing with sewage into a public waterway and onto my property. Mr. Cook also acknowledged that there is, we are near capacity with the sewer system back there. I would say not only we're near capacity, but we also have a significant problem if a three-inch rain is going to cause raw sewage to flood into a public waterway. There are currently five zones in that general vicinity. I want to talk about spot zoning for a second. I know that most of you all probably had, were not around in the decision-making process when all this spot zoning was done. Currently, there's five zones in that general vicinity, and not one of them is R2, as I understand it. So, to me, that's just compounding the problem with spot zoning. The other thing is, is the only R3 that's anywhere near that is actually on University, not on 40, not on 49. By that logic, I could go up and down Washington, and any road that intersects with Washington, I should be able to put an R2, an R3, a commercial, an industrial, whatever, because Washington has most of those. 49th is, in that block, only single-family residential and agriculture. I, I think each of us neighbors have said, if it was going to be a single-family R1 zoning, nobody would have any kind of issue with that. It fits with what else is there. Also, that R3 property that is in the vicinity on University isn't being used as such. It's been vacant for the three and a half years that I've lived in the property, and it's been for sale by the same owner, as I understand it, for that same timeframe. I don't know if that was spot-zoned 20 years ago as a favor to a friend, but I certainly hope that we're not making favors to anybody, and we're understanding that the purpose of the council is the betterment of the community and-
Sir, what was your last name again?
Pate.
Pate?
Pate, yes, sir.
I don't appreciate the term favors. Okay?
I, I was talking about years past.
I've been here for years.
I'm sorry?
I've been here for years.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know what the reason-
Our decisions are not based on favors, okay? I think that's your reference. Is that correct?
I'm talking about spot zoning that may have taken place 20-plus years ago. That was-
Okay, I'll accept that, then.
That, that was what I was referring to. With that, I guess I'm finished.
We've been a little neglect on our time limit, please. Limit your time to three minutes.
My name is Betty Caulcaser, and I live at 1008 North 49th. And I've lived on the corner of University and 49th for about 42 years, and I've always had water problems. We know it runs from the Masonic Lodge and the railroad, and it comes to our corner. And we've had flood. In fact, I just got through with an insurance claim of about $15,000 where I had water in my house. So, I am one house from where this, this building proposal. And I just think that we've had enough issues out there, and we're in single families. And I have talked to five of my neighbors, and I don't know whether they're here or not, I know some of them are, but I haven't talked to one that wants that. So, we're just asking tonight that you just let us handle our water stuff and help us when you can, and that we just don't want that out there close to us. We're one area family, and we just like to keep it that way. Not that we're against housing, not against any of that, but there's just issues out there with the water, and has been all the years that I've lived out there. There's been problems with water coming down and coming to the creek that we're talking about and coming down through at the back of our house, and I think it goes on down. And I don't know, I haven't walked it or anything, but I think it goes on down to Heritage and goes on down through there. So, we're just asking here tonight that, that you think real hard about, that if something's coming into where your home was, and you've lived there for all those years, we just ask for you to consider that tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Zachary Everett. I am the potential purchaser, purchaser. To put Mrs. Grube's answer, the get the cart before the horse, yes, for sure, we are. To give some backstory, the Planning and Zoning will not permit the lot split to occur until either at least an R1, if not an R2 zoning does get approved because of city ordinances, and I think of state ordinances, honestly. You cannot approve a lot split of an agricultural property less than five acres on each parcel. This being a seven-and-a-half acre parcel leaves one five-acre, one two-and-a-half, so it's not able to be split, which is not able to be sold. And so, yes, we are getting the cart before the horse, but it is unfortunately necessary. It's not the way I wanted to go. I preferred to purchase the property, do all the studies, and then try to, to get it rezoned after further knowledge, but unfortunately, I'm not able to do that at this time. But I did want to give you some, some plans that I'm going, that I would like to do. I am born and raised here in Durant, 23-years-old, so haven't been here very long, as you say, but I am, I am born and raised, and I actually live on that part of town. I'm building a house in the new addition Wilson Acres. So, I do live on that part of town, I do sympathize with their concerns, because I do have to drive through it, but obviously, I can't, I don't, I can't sympathize fully because of the fact that I don't live in that particular area, and I don't have all the flooding issues that I do, but I do completely understand. And I did want to, to express that I am fully committed to making sure that the post-development runoff is significantly less than the pre-development runoff, that being creating a pond with a nice water feature, because my plans are to do a 55-plus gated and fenced community for senior citizens to come and live in a stress-free, stress-free environment, have a nice clubhouse to, for them to, to have a community in. Because I feel like Durant, I know there's one in Larkspur, but not really a gated community where I think Durant could really use something like that. Years ago, I'd read that Sherman and Dennison were actually in the top 10 in the entire nation of places to retire. I feel like Durant should get a part of some of that as well. And so, I should like to turn this property into something other than just tall grass, just sitting there on, on a very busy street. I'd like to, to develop it into something of use and for, for tax reasons as well.
Any questions for Mr. Brewer? Anyone else in the audience?
Thank you.
Either in favor of or in opposition to? Anyone else? Third call, anyone else? We'll close the public hearing portion. What's council's pleasure?
I'll motion to deny ordinance 1833.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to deny the request. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion to deny is confirmed.
I have a question, Mr. Markham. There was a, there was a secondary part on that. We don't have to deny both pieces, do we?
You don't have to deny the emergency clause since the first part didn't pass.
Since it didn't pass, okay. Thank you, council.
It takes us to item 5B, under public hearing for the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Economic Development, CDBG-ED, application phase relating to the publicly-owned water distribution and sewer collection, infrastructure improvements project in the amount of $1 million, serving the Steel Fab Inc. facility operations to create new jobs located at Ms. Becca, you're on.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for my cough, and I hope I can get through this. I have passed around some sign-in sheets. If you could please sign those, and you can leave them in your seat, and I'll pick them up after a while, would be fine. The City of Durant has identified a need for economic development to benefit the community and enhance the quality of life for the Durant citizens. We have an opportunity to apply for a $1 million grant that would provide water distribution and wastewater collection system improvements for the Steel Fab plant that's going to be built on Country Club Road in the Durant Industrial, Industrial Park. And this project will help create new jobs for the city and the, and the area. They are proposing to create 90 new jobs that will meet the Oklahoma Quality Jobs, excuse me, eligibility. And this public hearing is to allow any concerns or comments from the public, excuse me, relating to the Community Development Block Grant Economic Development Financing Program through Oklahoma Department of Commerce. The estimate that we have is for $1 million, and that includes the engineering and all the infrastructure within the area. And this grant does not require any city cash match or in-kind labor or equipment. Any questions?
Any questions for Becca? Any questions from the public? This is a, a portion of our public hearing. Becca, do you?
Anybody?
Do you have a sign-in sheet, too?
Yes, there are some being passed around. I would like to state, too, that one of the requirements for the grant is that the jobs are made available to low-income individuals, and that will be a requirement that the company will have to assist with us in collecting that information from the applicants for their, their jobs.
Any comments from the public regarding this CDBG-ED block grant? Any comments, questions from the public? Any comments, questions from the public? We'll close the public hearing portion of the Community Development Block Grant hearing and move to item 5B1, Considered to Approve Resolution 2017-21 for Approval to Submit the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Economic Development Application to Oklahoma Department of Commerce for Publicly-Owned Infrastructure Improvements, serving the Steel Fab Inc. facility located at 446 Country Club Road.
And this is a, an application resolution that's requirement for the application stating that if we were awarded funds, that we would ensure that the, the project is, does follow the grant guidelines.
Any questions for Ms. Becca? Entertaining motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Item 5B2, Considered to Authorize the Mayor to Sign the Related Grant. Application documents necessary to complete 2017 CDBG-ED application for publicly-owned infrastructure improvements project serving Steel Fab Inc. facility.
And most of the application will be through the online system, Department of Commerce, but there'll be some requirements for you to sign, mayor, or documents.
Entertaining motion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing nine, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Thank you so much.
Thank you, Becca. Ladies and gentlemen, considering the hour, we are at item number seven under Citizen Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Citizens wishing to address the council regarding matters which are not listed on the agenda are required to sign up five minutes prior to the scheduled starting time. The sign-in sheet will contain space for your name, address, phone number, and topic to be discussed. In this way, the city staff will be able to follow up on any issues presented if necessary. Tonight, we have in excess of almost 20, I think. And typically, if, if you want to object to it, can we limit the time maybe to one or two minutes? And I apologize for that. It's, it's, we still have a lot of business to take care of, two other agendas to complete. Not complaining, but in the interest of time. Council, have any objections? Any objections? Like to recognize Janet Reed, and I think from our chamber executive wishes to speak. And Janet, for the record, your name and address.
Janet Reed. I'm a resident of Durant, a proud resident of Durant. First, thank you to the council for your dedication, and mayor for serving our city. We appreciate you. And I think after sitting through tonight, we understand what you go through on a daily basis, and I am sorry, we are extending this a little long. We live in a great city, a city that has seen tremendous growth in the past 10 years. We have seen ourselves tax revenues increase, revenue increase on a monthly basis for each of the 10 years. It excites me that we have a strong police force and fire department. It excites me that we have a strong police force and fire department. Our school system is also strong, exceeding most other Oklahoma schools and being compared to others on a national level. I do not want to see this changed. It also excites me to see new companies who have made investments in the millions to this community. I live here because I love this community. I want to see continued growth from companies so that the sales tax revenue will continue to show an upward trend. I encourage each of you to look at our city in a positive manner and stop the negativity that seems to be encompassing us. Yes, we have problems, as many cities our size do. But I promise, we can overcome these problems without shortchanging this city. I appreciate very much a comment made by Chief Houser earlier in the agenda during the citizens' accommodation. He stated, the citizen recognized the problem, they asserted the problem, and they brought solutions. If each of us as citizens in this community did this, we could begin to alleviate some of the problems that face us. Let's be proud of Durant, the place we have chosen to live, work, and play. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Janet. I know some are not here that had signed up or had to leave. For the record, Ms. Marty Phillips has a statement that she left, and we'll enter that in the record. Did Ms. Mickel leave? Okay. Pam Robinson.
Thank you for having me today, and my name is Pam Robinson. I live out at Remington Hills. My parents moved to Durant in, I think it was 1957. And so I do consider myself a hometown, hometown girl here. My, my thing I'm the most proud of is I'm the United Way director here in Durant, and every day I get to see wonderful things that happen here because of our community citizens. And there are people right here in this audience that give to United Way so that we can support the needs of our poverty-stricken people and of people that just have needs. And we have people that, there are so many emergencies that happen, and they come to United Way for most everything, including money for funerals. So you can imagine what all we have to deal with in our office. But what I, and the most proud of is we have eight agencies that we fund. And in 2016, we had our eight agencies perform two, over 220,000 acts of charity. That is awesome, folks, that these people work so hard, and I'm so proud of that. And with that, that's pretty much all I wanted to say, but this is awesome, that, that people in this community. Also, I did forget to tell you, one of the things, it takes money to do all of this and to fund these agencies. And I have some agents, some companies I'd like to talk to you about. Yamco is awesome. They have a little over 100 employees now, and out of those 100 employees, they donate nearly $26,000 a year to United Way. We have Cardinal Glass. Unbelievable what they do as far as food, money, they're there for us. You know, when I go to these companies on a one-on-one basis, they never say no to me. And that's important when you're trying to solve these problems in our community. We have, let's see where I wrote this down, Red River Ford. They are the most awesome bunch of guys over there. And our newest one that has stepped up is CMC. They're the same way. Every time I've called them, they have never said no to me. And as a matter of fact, I had a conversation with Mr. Alan Jackson, and he told me, I was thanking him for everything they're doing in the community. And he told me, he said, "Oh, Pam, you haven't seen anything yet." I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "Well, right now, we're just spending a lot of money, but you just wait until we start making money. You're gonna really see what we can do for this community." So I love Durant. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. Usually, I get the privilege of addressing you as Kara Bird, Executive Director of Imagine Durant, but today I would like to address you as Kara Bird, citizen of Durant, living on Candy Lane. I would also like to address you as an outsider who has come in. I'm not originally from Durant. I'm from a small little town called Etoka, and Durant was the big city to us. So I am, I had the privilege of actually choosing to move here. I did not have to live here. I had the opportunity to actually go to colleges like OU, OSU, and other places, and I chose Southeastern. There's a reason for that. I wanted to be in this community. I wanted to be able to be close to home, be close to my parents. After graduating from college, I went back home, if you can imagine that, to Etoka, and I worked for the state for almost five years, teaching tobacco prevention to youth. At the time, I was not looking for changes. I didn't have anything in mind but to stay there, raise a family, you know, grow, grow like all of my other family members had done. And an opportunity presented itself to move here for Imagine Durant. It took me about three weeks to tell Greg Massey, yes, I would take the job, which kind of surprises me, he waited that long for me. So I feel like I was destined to be here. I wasn't prepared to move. I was kind of headhunted, bound, brought here. I met my husband here. We are both young entrepreneurs in this community, and we love this community. If we didn't love it, we wouldn't be here. There's nothing really tying us down. One of the things that we love about this community is the continued growth and the opportunities that come within this community. You've already heard wonderful statements from Ms. Reed and Ms. Robinson, but one of the things I want to touch on is tonight, you guys did a great thing by passing the resolution to support the, the arts district that is going in on Ninth Street. I know that there was some concern about matching funds, but whenever you think about things like an arts district and, and different avenues and venues and recreation opportunities that are coming in, those are things that are gonna generate tax dollars, which will then go back. Of course, I don't have to explain economics to you guys, but that goes back to our roads and our infrastructure. Those are things young people want to see. They want to see arts districts. They want to see events like Stephanie is putting on with Main Street. It's what keeps them here. It's what keeps them engaged, it's what keeps them shopping local, which, which is, again, just helps our entire community. One of the things that couldn't have happened without that was, of course, you heard them say, CMC and the Choctaw Nation both committed funds to that. I think it's incredibly important that we continue to create an aligned force moving forward and do create that positive energy that we want our people to continue to experience growth so that they stay here and have amenities like bigger cities would have that might attract our young people and our millennials that would be leaving. So thank you for everything that you guys do and for the decisions that you make daily that are hard. We appreciate you, and we hope that you continue to support the growth that's coming our way. I have a handout for y'all, and I'll be giving a quiz. I'll keep it brief. I know it's been a long evening. As many of you know, I'm Stephanie Gardner, and I am the Director of Durant Main Street, but I am also a lifelong resident of Durant, an alumna of Southeastern, and want to be proud of this city. What I passed out, and I made some extra copies, if anyone would like to grab one before you go today, and it will also be up on the Durant Main Street website. We really wanted to follow in the path of positivity, so we decided to put a year-end report together of some of the accomplishments that Durant Main Street and our community has had this year. Our fiscal year end ended at the end of July, of June, so that's kind of the timing for this. And I'm not gonna go over the whole thing, but it's just a front-and-back, quick snapshot of some of the good that has come out of the community this year. We all know we're in a budget situation, you know, and everything sometimes comes down to dollar signs. So one thing that really jumps out to me, this year, if we were paying our volunteers a minimum wage, we had almost $18,000 worth of volunteer labor just through Durant Main Street. I know I'm on the board for the chamber for United Way, and that just continues to quadruple those types of numbers. And so that's really a quantifiable amount, you know, for us to think about how important it is for getting our community involved, for those people that are excited about moving our community forward and get them engaged. Another thing is, kind of going back to a dollar amount, you know, Durant Main Street is a nonprofit. Of course, you know, we receive a small grant from the city, but a lot of the burden of the things that we want to do for downtown and the things we want to do for our community, we need to fundraise for that. And so this year, between events like Dancing with the Stars, Colton's Run, we raised about $110,000 for the downtown community, which is, our sole purpose is to give back and invest in downtown in hopes that new businesses will move in and that we will see downtown flourish. Another high point, talking about, you know, new businesses, just in this past year, I've only been the Director of Durant Main Street for the last year, but in that short time, between our board and the efforts that all of our volunteers are doing, we've had six new businesses open in downtown. So that's something that's exciting for us. We're passionate about recruiting more businesses to our area. I want to echo, you know, if we're gonna have tourism, we're gonna have to get aggressive about it. If people are going to stay here, like our young people, and be proud of Durant, we need to offer things for them to do, and that's one of Main Street's goals, to not only bring in those businesses, but to engage the community that's already here. So I won't bore you with lots of details, but many of the highlights that you'll see on this were done in partnership with the city of Durant, and we couldn't have done that without the council and the city's backing. I know everyone's enjoyed the new landscaping downtown, you know, the hanging flower baskets, and I know at some point, people say, "It's just flowers, you know, why is that so important?" And yes, it costs money, but the change that I have heard from people walking up and down the streets of being proud of what it looks like, business owners that I'm reaching out to in the North Texas area to say, "Hey, you need to open your second location in downtown Durant." They're noticing, "Hey, yeah, we noticed that's looking better. You're having more events down there, and we're being proactive about trying to get not only residents but businesses here." So I really just wanted to give you this information to be able to look over and say thanks for supporting Main Street this past year. One last plea for anyone who wants to get involved. Tomorrow at 5:30 PM at the Durant Main Street office, we're having a volunteer info session. So it's a new year for us. We want to get more people involved. We really do want feedback and input, ideas to make this community better. So I hope to see you there if you want to get involved, and many of you already are involved with Main Street. 5:30 PM, Main Street office tomorrow. Thank you.
Liz McCraw. Know this lady's here, Ms. Janie Amstead. Are you still, are you still awake, Janie?
Good evening. My name is Janie Amstead, and I'm really, really glad to be here. I have just a very short thing to say to you all. I want to tell you how much I appreciate each of your service. This is a hard job, and you all are just great and are, to do this for our city and for our community. I've only been before the city council like this maybe two or three times, and each time it's been just a very positive experience. I will tell you about a time when I was about 10 years old, I came to this very place, and it went upstairs, and it was the creepiest place ever. So, and it was very scary. But, of course, I'm 70 years old, and I've born and raised here, so I've seen a lot of things in Durant, things that have changed, and I really, the only thing I want to tell you is how much I appreciate you and how much I love this community. I absolutely wouldn't live anyplace else. I did live for a while in Colorado, came back, and I've never looked back. I also want to tell you just a little story about my family. My son moved here with his wife and two children, my grandchildren, just recently from Colorado, in a lovely community of Loveland, Colorado. But they moved here because of the kind of community I told them it was. And day one, the children loved the schools, they never had a problem at all, that everything was totally positive. But the thing that they came here from was not so positive. They had tremendously high taxes, everything they did was regulated, they couldn't, you know, do anything that was not under the eye, the watchful eye of the city. It was very difficult to get anything done. And, and they just found that it was just constricting them so much, and they just, from, again, day one, they came here, from getting their electricity turned on, to the water, to any kind of permits they had to have, it was just joyous, really a joyous occasion for them compared to what they'd been in other places. So my message is, I love Durant, I really appreciate you all, and I, I couldn't tell you, thank you enough for doing what you do. Thank you very much.
Janie, thank you, and thank you for your very kind and gracious words. Mr. Carley spoke earlier regards to the rezoning. Brian Moore? Brian Moore? Ms. Robin Dodd, is she here? I think it's Melinda Keeling. Is James still here, James Dry? James want to talk about the city pool. If there are no objections, we have one other, it's under the airport authority, but I know Dr. Danny Craig is still here, I think, Nick, Dr. Danny? Oh, did he leave? Oh. Doctor, if there are no objections from council members, we'll just include the Dr. Danny Craig in this public, or citizens' comment. Dr. Danny, if you're prepared.
Just a few comments, I'll be very brief. Members of the city council, city manager, thank you for your time. Yesterday, the advisory board met. We met with KSA Engineering. They presented a presentation on offering their services for airport planning for future use. Right now, it's just an information, there's no action. I do have something I would like to bring to you. After the presentation, the advisory board met, or in the meeting, we discussed and passed a resolution requesting that before decisions are made on issues concerning the future of the airport, excepting for emergencies where there needs to be action taken immediately, to first give the issue to the advisory board, let us look at it, let us discuss it, and then research it and make it a resolution, a recommendation, back to you to what we think would be the best course of action. The reason for this, we are strictly advisory, but the members of the advisory board have a depth of knowledge that the city council members do not, and we feel we can help the board in making a wise and informed decision for the best future of the airport. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Danny. Actually, that concludes the citizen comments list. I, on behalf of the council, want to thank each one that presented. Thank you for your comments. Well taken and well noted, all of them, but particularly Janie, my friend. Thank you for your kind words. If there are no objections, we will, I would recommend that we recess out of regular session and open up in the utilities authority if there are no objections. Entertain a motion to recess out of regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. The clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, we're recessed out of regular session.
Are we going to utilities?
I'm going to take a five-minute break.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Those that might have an interest, Sallow was 66% for, 33%, so Sallow's bond passed.
Yes, sir, we did, yeah.
We'll let the record show it's 9:20, call to order the regular monthly meeting of September the 12th, 2017 of the Durant City Utilities Authority, and ask the Secretary to call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Here. For the record, we have a quorum, first order of business, consent items, 1A. Entertain a motion to approve the consent docket.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Secretary will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Item 2 requires no action under Administration 3A. Consider award of quote and approval of request for authorization to purchase for overhaul of headworks at Public Works and overhaul of headworks at wastewater treatment plant Choctaw, R.F.A.P. number 2018-054. Mr. JJ.
Yes, sir. This falls under what we deem periodic maintenance. As you read through the actual quote itself, it's replacing equipment items that were out periodically. This actually will be also pretty much a, this is also will be a requirement for us to do in a relatively soon manner because this revising of the public, the headworks will be needed for when we do the South Highway 78 pipe upgrade. So that, like I said, for these, sorry, that totally threw me off. So this is just, like I said, a periodic maintenance item.
Right.
Yes, sir. This is for wastewater treatment. And so we have two facilities, one's over there by the Public Works and the ones, the other one down by the airport.
Questions?
JJ, I don't have what it's going to cost, so can you tell me?
$20,000, ma'am.
Is there a, it says, make sure I'm on the right one here, that it was, we're recommending not the lowest bid? The lowest bidder was out of North Carolina?
Yes, sir. So actually, there was two different bids for this one. Reality, when you start doing major equipment pieces, there's a transportation issue. So one of the things we found, and this is extra from Mr. Terry Conner's expertise, is that when you start moving a lot of pieces of equipment to do the repairs and movements, we've been caught in the past of, while you have a lower bidder, they're farther out of state, and so they have that logistical footprint to bring them stuff. And because when we start taking down equipment, you've got to have a lag issue. So if we get caught, if we get caught with the equipment offline because of logistical issues, it was under his recommendation that we picked the closest bidder, bidders who would have less of that problem.
What's the difference in the two?
Distance wise, I don't know the time. I don't know.
No, no, no. I mean, what's the difference in cost? I didn't see that on here.
Um, I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was five. Yeah, that was $5,000.
What, what we have to consider here is not, not only the, maybe the lowest, but the best bid.
Yes, sir. So the best for the operational construct. And actually, we've gone through this before with Mr. Conner, and so I heavily trust his advice when it comes to these matters.
But as council members, we have a due diligence in recommending not the lowest bid, but in this case, the best bid. Your recommendation is the best bid.
This is the best bid, in our opinion, from Public Works.
What's the authority's pleasure? More questions for JJ?
Well, no, I'm just reading the, you know, there's one for $15,000, then below it's 45, so it's like $19,000. And then there's one for 20, anyways, the difference is about $10,000.
Yes, sir.
And which one did Mr. Conner recommend?
Uh, the one for, I think it was one for 20, actually.
I guess my question, I, Mr. Conner is the expert. I mean, don't, I'm not arguing that. I just want to make sure that $10,000 is worth.
Yes, sir.
Him being closer. You know what I mean?
Yes, sir, it is.
Uh, move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the Secretary will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Item 3B, consider approval of request for authorization for purchase for RTU upgrade to cellular for communications from headworks at Public Works to the wastewater treatment plant on Davis Road, R.F.A.P. 2018-019. Mr. JJ?
Yes, sir. This is actually an ongoing effort between the IT department and Public Works. Before, we brought forward things like SCADA upgrades, which is the control systems that link all the information back and forth between the systems. One of the things, the problems that we have with wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plants is the remoteness. So what this is, is an upgrade that, in layman terms, simplifies the network so that we have better communication between Mr. Conner and his team and the remote site, which is the, the headworks.
Just something new?
Yes, sir. This is new equipment.
In the budget?
Yeah, it's in the budget, yes.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Secretary will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Under information items, any questions from the authority members? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second to adjourn. The Secretary will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Let the record show it's 9:27, I'll call to order. Let the record show it's 9:28. Call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Durant Airport Authority of September the 12th, 2017, and ask the Secretary to call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Here. For the record, we have a quorum. First order of business is consent items, 1A.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the Secretary will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. No citizen comments. We heard Dr. Danny. Nothing under Administration. Our airport manager, any questions there? Hopefully not. Not here. I think we let. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Anything under new business? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Secretary will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, we are adjourned. Entertain a motion, to entertain a motion to reconvene in regular city council session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to reconvene. The...
We were on a roll. I mean, we were, we were rolling.
Entertain a motion to reconvene in regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. The clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. We're back into regular session.
I got my button push down over here for some reason.
Okay, we got everything. Okay. Entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. The clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. We are going into executive session. Thank you.